Back to seat and everybody made it. Nobody looks any worse for the wear here. I actually put on about five pounds, so.
I saw you walking at 5:15 the other day in the morning.
It's not running?
He wasn't running, he was walking.
Doing the walk run.
Oh, I just caught you on the walk thing.
You caught me on the walk part. So, all right, Mr. Manager.
Okay, great. It's back, it's great to be back too here in the members of council. What I'll do very quickly is go over the agenda for tonight as well as try to get us engaged with what will be happening for the rest of this month. In terms of tonight, basically we have a special exception that deals with the 7-Eleven at Broad Creek. And as you're aware, whenever we have a item, an item that has a one negative vote at the planning commission, we always bring it to you a week or let's say, in this case, two weeks before it's presented or you have to vote on it. So, we will have Frank Duke give you a presentation related to the 7-Eleven at Broad Creek. In terms of tonight, what we're attempting to do is just give you an update on three key projects that we have in the administration, the neighbors building neighborhoods, the Healthy City Initiative, and impact. All of them are customer service oriented. We just want to give you an update. It's not as if these are totally come from fruition, but we don't want to put things out there and then three years later you ask us, what about that initiative? Next, at your next meeting on the 24th, we will give you an update on where we are in FY 2012 as well as a peek into FY 2013 and FY 2014. That's typically what we do at this time of year, the mid-year update. Basically, we'll also want to better utilize the committee structure. For instance, today at the committees, we had conversations related to intercity rail, even a light rail update. So, in other words, we want to use 2012, calendar 2012, to really use the committee structure to get a lot of work done. With that said, some of the issues that will come up in the committees on the 24th is that we will give you an update on the CSP. As you know, that we've been doing a examination of the CSP and what's best for the CSP in terms of the relationship with the city and how it should be structured moving forward. We'll also provide you with an update on naming rights, something that has been floating around for a while, as well as this update on see the grow. We could actually have queued something up tonight, but we prefer to just have one more look at it. We're actually having some consultants come in, I guess it's next week, to look at the plans. But I will tell you that we have a short term and a long term solution that I think the most important piece of it is that it's going to treat people with dignity and respect. We're going to make sure that it's safe. We're not just going to do a transfer station from one place to another place and still have some of the problems that have been associated with the transfer station. So, we can give you a glimpse into that tonight, but we prefer to just have it in the committee structure next week. One of the issues that came up before the holidays was this issue dealing with bullying. We'd like to bring you up to date on that. We look at it more so in terms of harassment. And I will tell you that after having our acting human resources director, Capri Stanley, who is not here tonight, do an evaluation of where we are, I will tell you that what we have in terms of policies are lacking. We're going to have to do something with those policies. We're inconsistent, but now that this has raised to my level, we have a group of individuals, including Capri, we have James Rogers, we also have Winterbinder, Lori Crouch, and Bob Badger, who's working on this. And we actually had a very good conversation with Janie Bethel today. You know, Janie, Janie's right, so.
You mean written policies?
If we, as we looked at where we are, we have gaps. There are some, you would expect that we would have policies and procedures in place, but Capri has been acting for a very short period of time. And she talked with me frankly and said, no, Mr. Manager, we don't have these policies and procedures in place. So, we're putting a group of people together to address it head on. And as a matter of fact, we want, you know, Janie and also John Stanley to be a part of the process on the front end. So, that's one of those, you know, when you have an issue and it comes to your attention and there's a problem, just deal with it. And that's something we're going to have to deal with. Capri's not here tonight, and I would have introduced her, we'll introduce her next time, but I would like to introduce two people. Ron Williams, who is now our assistant city manager. Yeah, I think many of you may recognize Ron.
That's someone's issue.
We've, he has a great track record with the city, anywhere from intergovernmental relations to the budget office. And I will tell you that I've been pursuing Ron for a while. I figured the key was not just to pursue Ron, but to, you know, talk to his wife and kids. And we're very happy to have Ron back on the team. And also, although we've made a mention of it earlier, David Sullivan, is David? Okay, David Sullivan, who's our new director of IT. And David just has a tremendous track record, similar position at Virginia Beach as well as being the chief of staff for Light Rail. And I will tell you, I've gotten more messages about David and more kudos of having David on the team than I, you know, ever expected. So, it's great to start to build this team. The last thing I'd like to mention is that the calendar going forward. Basically, we were pretty ambitious with making sure that we had different boards and commissions coming to the council for the joint meetings. We want to get to you a, the first six months in the pack at this Friday. But basically, we already have two boards, I think, that we get them in front of the council pretty quickly. The school board is ready to come as quickly as our last meeting of this month, the 31st of January, which would be a work session, not a voting meeting. And we'd also like to get the CSP, NRHA, and the EDA back in front of you in this first quarter. One that we did not do at the end of the year was the recreation commission. So, we want to make sure that they're in that first set of meetings. But again, we have a list of boards and commissions that really want to get in front of the council. And I think it was very productive last year, what we were able to do. Before I turn it back over to you, Mayor, there's one housekeeping issue, R14, that I'd like to turn over to Burner.
The R14 item is a downtown development certificate. That's any use down, in a downtown zone that's changed or exterior change requires a downtown development certificate. This is not known to have any issues, but that the ordinance that we sent out initially didn't contain what it was being changed to. This is on 135 East Old Road. So, that the ordinance that I've handed out with a section two in it, which limits the, permits the change to residential with the attached drawings, will be voted on, will be, you'll be voting on it tonight rather than the one that was sent out in the electronic package.
Okay. Okay, let's see what council concerns.
I don't have any concerns, but I would like to just, one compliment. It really should go to Sheriff McCabe's office and Mike O'Toole there. And I've gotten this email from the Civic League. On January 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th, six, the inmate labor crews that the sheriff has collected 695 bags of leaves and trash from the Meadowbrook School site on Sherwin Avenue. Those bags were collected by the labor crew and transported to the dump. And I can tell you that even when we were at the Boards Corner Task Force meetings, it's almost routine that the discussion shifts over, and I think Terry and Barclay, when it comes to cleanup, that it almost always shifts over to the sheriff's. Where can the sheriff help us? Where can, where can he step in? What can he fill in and do for us? And I will tell you that, you know, Bob and Mike over at the sheriff's office, Bob Cave, have been tremendous in stepping on it. And frankly, I don't, I don't think they've ever told us no. And that really has been, and that really deserves quite a compliment and a thank you from the council for what they've done. I just got that email, and that was from somebody at the Civic League who happened to be there and saw that and was thanking Mr. O'Toole for that. I don't have anything else. I've been taking care of it with the assistant managers.
Right. Let's read again about three things quickly. The tennis courts at Barrow Park need to be preserved, and a master plan that was, they were slated to be removed. Those courts have a great history in the African-American community. Althea Gibson, who was the first great black female tennis player, played there. When Arthur Ashe could not play at Richmond Bird Park because of segregation, he played at Barrow Park two or three times per month on the weekends. The Reed family, who were the caretakers of the park, had a son named Billy and a daughter named Cynthia Reed, who were great tennis players. Mr. Ralph Predlo, Charles Harding, Hank Mayner, and the list goes on to some of Norfolk's finest tennis players. When the courts are refurbished, they should be clay courts as they were in the beginning, and they should face north and south to prevent the sun from getting in players' eyes. Somebody turn those courts around. And so, but these courts really need to be maintained for the historical aspects that they have in our community. For those of you who don't know Norfolk's history, like many cities, blacks couldn't go to city parks. We had Barrow Park. We had a monkey, and we even had a baboon named Mike. Last week at the Church Street Huntersville Task Force, Mrs. Josephine McBride, who is 103 years old, spoke of the promises that were never kept for the improvements of Barrow Park and surrounding communities. Realizing the budget restraints, the tennis courts and amphitheater should be accelerated and also programming for children, and it would certainly benefit the community. I would suggest that some staff members, and I appreciate all the staff members, before you make suggestions about changes, you first explore the historical perspective of some of Norfolk's landmarks, both black and white. You know, I've been talking about security over at the Campus Stella Recreation Center. This morning at the South Side Task Force meeting, we had Lieutenant Miles there, we had Officer Nullem's there, we had two police cars there. Somebody broke into a city vehicle while the task force was going on in the parking lot with the city vehicles there. And so, my concern had been about nighttime. And so, if these rascals are so brazen that they're going to break into vehicles with the police department right there, parking lot full, then I'm really concerned about the children at night. And so, we can just, you know, kind of make sure that when the, it gets dark sooner than it does when it's springtime, we can just make sure that we have some security over there. And I'd also, Marcus, like to meet with somebody from your staff as well as our library director, Mr. Moss, over at the Black Branch Library with some of the members of the community so we can point out some improvements that are needed. Also, I'd like to know ahead of time, we're going to discuss the precinct, you know, the suggestions made here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then the final.
I need to schedule that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the final thing is, I was listening to public radio last weekend. I'm sure most of you know that the Panama Canal is being expanded, be completed in 14. Norfolk is the only city on the East Coast whose channel is deep enough to handle those large ships coming in. Charleston, Miami, Savannah, they all have to go through exercises with environmental programs. Since we already have the deep water, and if I'm not mistaken, I think Peter Babus, that was probably one of the last things he did as a state senator back in the eighties. But since we already have the deep water, we need to do whatever else we can do to kind of make sure that we can get as much of that tonnage to come this way. I mean, we already hit it again. We don't have to fight environmentalists or anything like that. So, while the other cities are trying to get permits to deepen their channels, then we could use that time to see, we'll talk to these shipping companies to see what we can do to attract more, more tonnage.
Paul, I think the port is, you know, has taken lead in that Mr. Bridges has, that's one of the, there's some excess capacity really that's prepared to accept some of those ships at the new Moller facility, which they have a long-term lease on, as well as at MIT. So, but it will certainly, with the widening of the Panama Canal, of all the ports on the East Coast that I'm aware of, just like you mentioned, we're the one port that's probably best positioned to receive these super tankers, can be super cargo container ships, so.
And maybe the ports are fighting for money.
And, you know, maybe it'd be a good idea. Well, why don't we get that truck in here and get some?
I was thinking, instead of them coming here, maybe we go out, because they still owe us a boat trip. We never got to do the boat trip. We had our orientation with them, but maybe when it gets warmer, we can go out and see the facilities and the big berth.
We could go most any time and go up on the tower. And you can see the world from that tower, and they can tell us what they're doing to get ready for all of this and what role we can play in helping them.
But I was very pleased to hear on public radio that Norfolk was the only city on the East Coast that's ready.
I missed that, that was on.
Yeah, last week something.
Was it a national?
Yeah, right, it was national. Sounded good. That's all I have.
I've got, I've got two things. First, should we get a presentation on this no kill policy that all of our neighbors, neighboring communities have? And for some reason, and I don't understand all the introductions, but I'm getting lots of mail, and most of them come from people like neighbors.
Francis, what are they?
And it doesn't, I don't know, it doesn't seem to be that complicated an issue, but it, it seems to me we cannot really get our arms around it.
I've been working with Ann and a number of members in the community on trying to get policy put together and some ideas on what we're not doing and.
Well, that's what I brought it up.
Yeah, you did too.
It's a committee meeting too.
Well, we, Angela, we asked, and Ann and I have been talking, we're going to have a presentation at our committees, because we need to talk with our animal shelter coordinator to have him explain to us the difficulties, so.
Well, they have language already prepared for us to adopt and ordinance to fix it and match what some of the other cities do. And I gave that a while ago, but I know that there is some conflict, and it might be looking, we might need to look at the budget. There might be some things that need to be addressed in the budget with our.
And this is not something that has just sprung up this, last year. Every time, you know, the directors keep saying, why it can't happen here, and then we hear from the community on why it can happen. And I just want somebody to clarify for us and then decide if budgetarily we can do it. Or should. I agree.
Well, maybe we ought to have, I mean, I think everybody on the, the council's heard enough about this, that maybe we ought to have a presentation to the entire council on this, and we've done that a couple.
Certainly rather than later.
Yeah.
And I realize it was in your committee.
Oh, yeah.
But I.
We're getting chain letters now.
Yeah.
The other thing, I know we've gotten a number of proposals on Waterside. What is the schedule for you briefing us on, on anything on Waterside?
Sure. The, you're right, we have gotten a number of proposals.
I know, because Terry told me.
Yeah. And maybe it's best for me to turn this over to Stanley in terms of how we're handling the process.
Because I have, I mean, maybe I've missed something. I really have no clue where I was going.
No.
As the council may recognize, I think Waterside is owned by Waterside, at least, Waterside Associates Limited Partnership, owned by the NRHA. So, it is that entity issued an RFD and received proposal. We're in the process of reviewing those proposals now, once they're evaluated and we have enough sufficient information to.
What is the timetable for?
We have, at this moment, we, I can't tell you, it's a day where we, we really hadn't picked that yet or anything. We just got these in on December 16th, and we had one group meeting.
Who, who is in the group?
Who is in the group? It is the three board members of Waterside Associates, Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Hill, and myself. We're also Ann and Mr. Fishgo, Mr. Jones, and I think Chuck, oh, Chuck Ray. They need to help us gather information.
Are we talking this quarter?
And certainly, we anticipate as quickly as possible coming to you and giving you all a briefing, closed session on the, on the real estate proposal.
Just give me, I'm not going to hold you to a six week, a month, this quarter. I know we've got budget coming up and all.
I would hope that we do it within the month.
Do you have four weeks or? He says quarter, he says month. He's saying by the end of, by the end of March, we would add some. I'm not trying to buy, you know, I just.
That's why I got.
Okay, that's all I have.
I feel like we need to talk about the Community Services Board and the scandal that happened with the employee that didn't show up. We've had comments in the paper from various members of our council. We all know that the CSP was independent in most ways from city council, but nobody else in Tidewater knows that. People were talking about it for, what, 18 months? I mean, I don't know, Andy and Paul may understand this because of the legal issues. I don't understand where we are with this. Is anybody else feeling this frustration or, I mean, I get all my information on this from the paper. And if Andy feels that maybe we should have a, a inquiry into it with an auditor, or Paul says it's going to work out with the civil situation, or, well, whatever. But I mean, that's where I'm getting my information. And I just wonder, is there some way we can explain to me and the rest of us in the community on why we're where we are and what we could expect in the future on this?
Terry, didn't you think Marcus said on the 24th?
No, I thought what you were telling me on the 24th was whether or not CSP was going to be brought in to be part of the city. I'm talking about this case that doesn't go away, and everybody talks about, I mean, we all, you all get the emails, you all get the comments from the employees and from the citizens, you all read the editorials. I mean, am I the only one feeling a drift on this?
Perhaps. In fact, I think now that it's in litigation, we all, a lot of, I think, a lot of those requests, I mean, my request, I know was pre-litigation.
Right.
I think that at this point with litigation that's currently pending, perhaps I think one thing that would help is, is that since it is in litigation, we are still in litigation, we're not burdened.
Yes, we, the Community Service Board filed a suit against four of the employees, three of which were terminated, to try to collect the money that was paid to Jill McLeone. So, it's a collection action that.
It's CSP's action, not the city's action.
Right, right, right. The city wouldn't have standing to bring it.
So, if, if, and who's representing CSP or is the city attorney's office?
Yes.
All right, so now, if we were to ask you to give us a briefing on that, you may be conflicted in the sense, and I'm, I'm talking now.
Yes.
Working in my head, are you conflicted ethically to be able to give us a briefing on the CSP suit, since it is quasi-independent agency that it is, to be able to tell us in, I don't care, it would, because it involves litigation, it should be closed sessions. We understand the issues and your strategy and see where you're going with it, and then open session on the other issues that would not be involved, the strategy of litigation, to give our, of course, our case away, since you are, you do have adverse parties involved. But can you even do that with us at this point?
I think so. And out of an abundance of caution, I could get the permission of the Community Service Board to show that there is not a conflict, but I'm confident that that can be done.
Well, that being said, and I would ask, I think the first step, Terry, to that would be to hear from council as to where, what were the status of the suit, where you plan on going with it. I mean, if it's possible, I.
The suit involves the trying to recover the funds, right?
Right.
So, it's a little different. It's a little, I mean, I'm talking, I'm thinking out loud too. And just a question about how could this have gone on for 12 years and nobody had done anything about it? You know, I try not to let the newspaper set the agenda.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, if they want to write about stuff that's 18 months old and then write, you know, editorials they can. But I will tell you that yesterday morning at 7:30, I spoke to a group down Little Creek Brook Road, and last night I spoke to a Civic League, I'm by the Water Highway, and I felt compelled on both instances to talk about the CSP at some point and hear about this. And we just, we have got to find a way to bring some finality to this. I've talked, you know, I know the police have investigated this thoroughly, the Norfolk Police Department, I know other agencies have, and they all come up empty-handed and they close their, you know, maybe a few just came in and recited the number of people who've investigated this and the conclusions that they've drawn.
Status.
And just said, here's where it is. I mean, so we could at least say, you know, my comment in the paper about, you know, the truth will eventually come out, I think it will. But it didn't really have so much of a reference. I mean, I didn't mean to imply that this lawsuit was, was, you know, was, his lawsuits were intending, you know, to reach that point to us.
Would this prevent, say, John Sanderland still going in and doing investigation?
See, I don't think the auditor is set up to do that, that this auditor is set up.
Isn't, I'm pretty sure John does investigations like that as well. He does it within.
He doesn't, he doesn't really do performance audits like. Well, once you've had the police in there and all these other folks doing this stuff, I don't know if, well, let's do this as a first step. We'll see what, what Burner can tell us.
Right.
We'll see what Marcus is planning to do with the CSP, and at the same time, review all the other investigations that have gone on. And then if we think we need to go one step further, then we can talk about it. What do you think?
I think that that's fair enough.
Let's, let's get some.
All the other investigations completed. We just left with the civil.
See, that's, that's the thing. I don't think we know where it is. I think there's a big question mark out there as to if in fact an employee can be unfairly plagued for it, that why isn't somebody found responsible for that? And I think, now, I, I, you know, I, and if there's an answer to that, great, give it to us. But there, there's that perception out there that it was kind of dropped, and that is probably an unfair perception, but it continues. And unless we address it, and, you know, and, you know, I know that there certainly are issues that need to be done in closed session. I appreciate that.
We can't avoid that.
But let's face it, the names are all out there. Everybody knows them, they're all been in the paper, they're all been talking to. So, I think a certain amount of openness on this is, is necessary. I really do, to demonstrate, to get this past us and move on. And so, I hope that as much as we can legally, that this be done in the open setting so that the rest of the citizens understand what's going on with this.
If I could just say this very summarily right now, that Maureen Womack reviewed this, and four people who worked there were forced to depart as a result of it. Some of the most senior people and an assistant to the former director. So, that, there was that personnel action that was taken. The Norfolk Police investigated it. A lawyer from my office looked into it. The FBI contacted Austin, was known to be investigating it. People from the federal inspector general's office and the Commonwealth Inspector General's office made inquiry and appeared to be investigating. So, that the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the FBI, the police, and two inspector general's offices, and the executive director reviewed it and took some personnel action. That those are four entities that I know that looked at, at it in addition to the executive director. I don't know that, there's a whole lot of investigatory bodies left after the police, FBI, and inspector general's office. And I did also read that no actions had been taken. And I think it's well-known that there were personnel actions that were taken, and it's resulted in those individuals bringing a lawsuit against the former executive director for the actions that she took with them. So, that is what I know in a nutshell. Those are the milestones that have happened. And what you're asking, is there, is there something else that could happen? That's the question, but I'll tell you, that is what I know that has taken place.
No criminal offenses have been, Commonwealth attorney reviewed. After the police investigated, he declined to prosecute anyone, didn't think any crimes.
Well, I mean, I, we can all, whether that, what I'd like is, and following on Terry and I, I don't want to steal what you're saying, I like the conclusion, I like the reports that were produced by each of those agencies that. that were produced by each of those agencies that produced reports, that we can examine those reports in their investigation. We should have the ability to see those. If you have a report from Norfolk PD, I think we should have a right to see why they decided that there was no criminal violation, why the Commonwealth attorney decided not to prosecute, and why the state inspector general's office has decided that it's something that shouldn't be taken up by the attorney general's office. We should see those reports, Bernard. And if you have reports from them, I'd like to be able to review them.
We don't. The, the police have a history, they won't even release the investigation relating into the former mayor's death. Police investigations are seldom released. The FBI, we can ask the FBI, we can ask the inspector general to give us their work, we can ask the Commonwealth attorney. I will ask them, but my prediction is that they will not produce to you their investigatory material, that criminal investigations are...
Well, I like a second opinion. I mean, I think Greg's in his office, probably did a good job, but if you have a doctor who you don't agree with, you go and get a second opinion. Let's get another Commonwealth attorney from another city to come in.
Well, and that's happened, remember, that happened between, between the two revenue and treasurer's offices, and you had a Commonwealth attorney came in, performed an investigation, whatever it was.
Because, because you had a conflict, they're...
I understand that, but we, but we got a report that was very lengthy and explained out what the problems were to be rectified. You have the person who's the director of public safety sitting to my left, and if that being the case, I'm sure the director of public safety, if he has the ability to say, I want to see the report that you did on the CSB, that you've said that you can't prosecute, at least to the PD, and PD and Commonwealth attorney work hand in hand, then I'd like to know why. I would like to see it. And I, you know, I followed up with Terry. I think we have a right to know why, instead of just, I know how the cops work, and I would like to see what they relied upon, what they, what they reviewed, what they relied upon, and who they interviewed, if they did, or did they just take interviews of others and decide that that was what they were going to do? I'd like to know. I think Terry has a great, great point in this.
Well, I'm a long way, wait, I'm a long way from thinking this council has the ability to conduct some sort of inquisition of Norfolk Police Department and the Commonwealth attorney's...
It's not an inquisition.
Well, if what you're going to do is go in there and challenge their investigative, their investigation, that's a whole different thing.
Well, director of public safety sits right here. He has, they work for him. He has the right to say, tell me what you have, why aren't we prosecuting? And I, I think we have a right to know.
No, no, Commonwealth attorney decides who gets prosecuted.
Well, if we had a separate investigation from PD, we have a separate investigation from Commonwealth attorney's office, you have a separate investigation from the state IG, and we have no reports from anybody, nobody has produced anything, any paper, Paul, that says, we're not going to, all we get is a phone call says we're not prosecuting or one line? Come on, we're getting had. We need, we should have, there's, we should know what they looked at then. And I know in the discovery process, and that's why I think Terry's right, we should have an idea, you know, as to where we are, what's happened, and why we're in the position we're in in the civil case, where are we? I mean, heck, we're sitting here, we have to ask, you know, Bernard has to now ask the CSB to make everything plain, that they can come back to us, even tell us what they're going to do, or what's going on in their litigation. What happens if they say no? They tell Bernard, you know, you can't go tell council. And I think you have to ask, you're right. And they could say no to us, the same guys we appointed.
I think that's right.
Yeah, and so where does that leave us? Is that a mess or what? You know, this, this really has been a terribly unfortunate situation for months, and, you know, I think we should have grabbed it, you know, we can look back and we can, we can beat ourselves, but at the very beginning, we should, we should have, back in that August meeting, that first meeting, we should have grabbed it and it should have been taken, we should have attacked it from the very start. And we can beat ourselves up about it, and we let, it just, it got away, and we, you know, I can ask for, you know, an auditor, and it just gets passed over, be that as it may. You know, we've got other people investigating, that's fine, but I think that we really, we have to learn a lesson. We didn't learn the lesson. We really do. And if the auditor's not set up, somebody other than the city attorney's office should be set up to perform those investigations in-house, or the state police. I didn't take my blood pressure medication.
Well, I mean, you know, I, okay, all right, we'll leave it. One thing that we would like to do is move on with how we're going to reorganize the community services as quickly as possible, okay?
That's the 24th.
So where, where are we going on this point? What have you decided on to do about the investigation, anything, or...
Well, it seems like the two things that were requested is, is one, the future structure of the CSB, and two, at a bare minimum, a report on who has investigated the CSB, whether or not those investigations have come to an conclusion, and what, if anything, was produced by those.
At the open, and what actions were taken, personnel actions?
And the status of the civil cases.
Right, right. And the status of the current civil cases.
I just think a statement needs to be made, it needs to get out there and get on with it. It's just been floating around way too long.
I don't know that you're even going to get to that point on the 24th.
And of course, I'm not going to be here on the 24th, but I'll check in on you.
You can watch it.
Yeah, it cost me $2,400 last year. I didn't know about those data roaming charges.
Okay, we've got an hour left before we do anything else.
About the structure of our meetings, because of exactly what's just happened. And that, I guess we need to do it another day, but I'm not sure this is working with as, as frequently as we're meeting, and it seems like every time our agenda is just, I mean, we don't get to do it. I mean, I'll be interested to know, I'll be quiet now to see if it happens.
Well, I, I just, to piggyback on that, I think that the meetings where we, we just have informal meetings could be better utilized, and we do have those committee meetings, but we could take an hour after that to talk about our concerns, instead of just meeting with that group. Since we're all down here anyway, we're being brought down here to a location, let's use that time to do council concerns and...
I'd be glad to, you know, some of us started at 3 o'clock today, and have been here since 3, okay?
I'd like to meet early.
I'd be glad to start these meetings earlier, because we could get a lot more on the table, but we'll start meetings earlier and we'll see, you know, what kind of attendance we have.
Yeah, no, I, that's what I would wonder for both.
Okay, we're glad to take a look at that one. Do we have anything else that would eat up?
Okay, okay.
By the way, okay. I think maybe the council interests and concerns need, we need to have a, some sort of formula for how we do this, as opposed to just throwing everything out on the table.
They do call around and ask, do you have any concerns?
I do, too.
I think the city manager can't call me, and I can't, you know, you can't really put out what you want to say and everyone, everybody to hear, and everybody might be asking the same thing, I don't know.
Okay, all right.
Okay, three things real quick. Meadowbrook, Sevi, Rosemont area, there's been some concerns about when the street sweeper is supposed to come to and take care of that community, and mostly holidays, some confusion at Christmas and Thanksgiving as to the dates and times, and so we can get that information, pass that on. I guess we all got this today, as it relates to Military Highway Light Rail Stop Speeding through there, a few people that inquired about, if there's anything we can do about the speeding on those roads adjacent to the light rail station. And the third thing, I just want to address what Mr. Riddick just said, as it relates to Barrow Park, as you well know, we've been working on that for quite some time, but with budget shortfalls, we've had to make some decisions about what comes first. And one of the things we did work on first was that store, the rugby store. The second thing, we had been working within that community, we had put new playground equipment in there, and we bought some adjacent land in that area, because we knew that parking was an issue, and getting in and getting out was an issue. We had worked to put it, we had charrettes with the community to engage them about what it is we wanted to see in that park. And we looked at all of the other parks around the city, and we wanted to do something special in that park. Now, the tennis courts never came up, in terms of when people came in and weighed in, you know, it was never a part of the conversation. Biggest issue was this amphitheater. We had talked about the type of feel, we want to see something special out there, like we do in all of our parks, whether or not the boxing ring stays, jogging trails, basketball courts, so on and so forth. And so with the leadership in that community, it's been, I guess, different philosophies in terms of what we should have. But we've been appropriating the funds to do what we need to do in that community, but we just have not gotten a consensus in terms of, you know, what, what they really want. And so I'm glad to hear you say something about tennis courts, because it never was a part of the conversation. In all the meetings that we had or discussed, east-west, or the history of that, or, no one had ever brought that up. But again, that is, as well as the picnic shelters, but one of the biggest issues was the, the boxing arena. You know, someone wanted to expand that, someone wanted to tear that down. And so what we said we were going to do is, you know, after spending all that time, money, and bringing in consultants, it appears that we are going to have to go back to the table again, because at the end of the day, you want to get it right, you know? But what we have now, what we were ready to go with, obviously, is not the will of some of the, some folk that have moved in and joined the city. So we'll take that and go back to the community. Darrell and Crittenden and that staff have been working very hard, you know, to try to accommodate the needs, but I can tell you, it's going to be done right.
Yeah, I think if they just leave the tennis courts there, you know, everything else, I think it would be great.
All right, well, we can do that, that's no problem. That's all I would like.
Angela.
I need to get some information about this way. We've got to get it in.
Couple things. Piggybacking in a different area, in, on south, on the south side, in the area of the Boys and Girls Club, the lighting. And we have these discussions, I get issues or complaints from citizens about lighting, and sometimes the issue is that the lights are out, and it's just a matter of someone reporting it to Dominion Power, and Dominion Power going out and, you know, putting out, putting the light bulb off and making that, that light bulb functional again. But the other issue is that we use a generic standard for lighting, and every community is not the same. Some communities have more illicit activity than others, some communities have some darker spots than others, and to say that there's a blanket fix based on some federal standard, to me, based on what I hear from citizens in their neighborhoods, I think we need to go back and look at that and look at it neighborhood by neighborhood, to make sure that the needs of those neighbors, neighborhoods are being met. We want people to turn on porch lights, and we want them to do all that, but at the end of, we, when it's all said and done, you know, we want to make sure that the neighbors feel safe, and that there's adequate lighting, and that folks feel like they can walk down their streets at night. And my understanding is over by the Boys and Girls Club is that it's extremely dark. Citizens have complained for quite some time, from what I'm told, and they have not gotten any response back. There's a bright light from First Baptist Church Berkeley that shines, provides some illumination over there, but not enough for folks coming and going, and they have evening activities and things like that. The other thing was with the economic development in Norfolk, I had a pretty nice conversation with a young lady from the Pilot, and about the Sears closing, and I brought up before, Costco is entertaining leaving. And over on Virginia Beach Boulevard, we've got some, we've got a Vinegar's that's gone, and a Pizza Hut that's closed, and a Midas that's closed, and now the Scotsman in Janif is closing, and I know we have some economic difficulties, and people can't spend money they don't have, but for every dollar that they do have to spend, I'd like them to spend it in Norfolk. I don't want to see people leaving Norfolk to go spend their dollars in Chesapeake and Virginia Beach and, and in other cities. And I'd just like to find out what economic development is doing in the way of retention for our businesses, to try to engage those parties. I mean, you know, Costco leaving, they employ a lot of folks, they service a lot more folks. We want to keep them, you know, we want to work with them to try to find a solution to their problem, especially when we know it exists. So I, I'd like to, you know, I'd really like to, for economic development, to reach out to our existing businesses and say, hey, we're here, this is what we do, how can we help you? We may not be able to save each one, but for the ones that we can save, I want us to make every effort possible to save those businesses. And that's pretty much all that I have.
This is just a very brief, maybe in general, I don't know if any other council members have the same concern, but when our crews go out and fix a, say, a water leak or something, and they put in a temporary patch, I don't know if we can do a better job with the temporary patches. I remember going to that football game, the ODU football game, and they had done some work on large, in large one area, and there was a temporary patch right there that within probably the day that they put it in there was already sinking and creating, you know, it ripples up and it creates some unsafe conditions. And I just noticed a lot more of this. I know there's probably something with the temperature and what they can do, but if we could look into how we patch up those temporary until they can come through. And it also goes with line painting, that when they're done with it, say it went over a crosswalk, that we make sure that somebody falls back over and repaints the crosswalk that it, you know, or a traffic line or something, because it just makes the, the road in, in our city look a little bit trashier, I guess you could say, when you have all these patched up areas and we don't clean up after it. And that concern came from the recent water leak down in Ocean View, and the patchwork they did, they carved up the road, and they only patched up the area that they tore up, but it makes it look awful now, and the lines are all covered up, and it's already confusing down there with the other construction going on. But does anybody else share that? I don't know if...
It's all over, it's all over, it's in evidence, yes.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. Especially on Hampton Boulevard, because of the trucks, I mean, those temporary patches are gone, and, you know, the first time a truck goes over it...
That's it?
That's it.
Oh, bunches done, but I'm not...
I give my touch to Terry.
I'm going to yield my time to Terry, too. But she'll be going to that.
I was going to say, because you said I'm not going to be here, so meetings will be done early.
Well, can we move it to a date that Terry's here for the CSB?
Not a chance. We're going to get this out as quickly as possible.
It's all right. I'll be watching over you guys.
In fact, it'll probably come back when she's here, I'm sure.
400.
All right, Marcus, let's do it.
Okay.
Great. That's a 7/11.
It is a 7/11.
Do you all see the gas price on there, too?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not a guarantee.
It's all right. It must be per liter.
As the city manager indicated to you, whatever planning commission recommends has a negative vote on a project, we try to bring it to you at least two weeks before you are asked to vote on it, and this is one of those cases where we have negative votes from the planning commission. This is a request by 7/11, which is looking to locate a new facility on East Virginia Beach Boulevard at the corner of Valentine. What they're looking for is a special exception, as well as a Broad Creek Development Certificate. The location, as you see here, is within the Broad Creek Gateway Overlay, where we have standards about the way buildings have to look and placement of buildings, as well as limitations on uses. It is immediately adjacent to both the Broad Creek and Middletown Orchard Neighborhood, and it is surrounded by a whole series of single-family, multifamily, residential, commercial, and industrial uses. This is here in the city where we have a limited average. The, this is actually a replacement for the current 7/11 that was located on Princess Anne and Valentine, that was, has been relocated or is being relocated in order to accommodate the Croc Center.
Make sure it's not the same operator.
Not the same operator, but it's the overall store. This is showing what that one particularly used to look like, and down at the bottom, we need to reference certain knowledge of the site where it's proposed to locate. It's currently developed as a gas station... currently developed as a gas station, and it is very much open and does not meet any of the criteria in the Broad Creek Gateway Overlay. What Seven Eleven is requesting is, there are actually two special exceptions, one for off-premise alcohol sales, and the other one is for 24 hours. And it will be a five gas service islands located in this facility. Like I said, the site is located C2, and as I said, too, there are actually three special exceptions, a gas station, retail sales after midnight, 24-hour sales, and the sale of alcohol for off-premise consumption. The proposed-
Can you talk about, maybe you might want to come back and talk about the alcohol? Is it beer, is it wine?
It would be beer and wine is the only thing, and no single serve, no single serves.
What about wine being warm only? So you won't have to worry about patron buying a bottle of wine, walking around inside the building, open it up? You know, they just, you know, if it were a wine that would, you know, I wonder, is that one thing that they would consider?
Um, that's, we've got representatives here, their attorneys, so we could ask them to take that back and look at it.
Oh, I don't, I don't think that that would be asking too much, they still get to sell.
Yeah.
So that, we will add that to that.
But if anybody's-
But most wines are drunk.
Yeah. If anybody is in that condition, that's just going to buy one anyhow, Frank, disrespect, but Frank, he don't care if it's hot or cold, he's going to get his wine anyhow.
No, I think it'll make a difference. While I throw that good.
I don't think a wine owner really cares.
But I know what you're getting at.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Frank.
Okay, time out, go ahead, Frank.
Again, the analysis, one of the things that we looked at was the general plan designation for this site, which is commercial, and that's picked up out of the Broad Creek Plan, so it is consistent with the Broad Creek Plan and the general plan, but I do need to acknowledge the Broad Creek Plan, when it was done envisioned, this site would be a grocery store or medical office. Challenge we've got is the current site that we have, the land area that we're dealing with is way too small for either one of those uses. And this particular site does comply with all of the regulations that council has adopted, governing special exceptions. The site does require some waivers from the Broad Creek Gateway Overlay standards, which is what the development certificate enables. We actually have three issues that require waivers, and it's a building location because it's pushed back further from the street than we would typically want. We also have the issue with the loading location where it is not exactly in the location, it's to the side of the store instead of behind it. And the parking location is to the front. And the one factor justifies all three of those, and that is, this is an existing gas station. The gas tanks are located under the current islands, which is where this would still be. So because you can't move those gas tanks readily, they're looking to take advantage of those and create a building that would otherwise conform to the requirements with the exceptions of these standards. And on staff, we believe that that is completely justified, looking at the overall design, which I'll show you in just a second, in combination with the existence of those underground tanks. And there is the overall design. You also have some images on the side to give you a closer image of what the building would look like. This is not your typical Seven Eleven. This is the same image that you have on the screen. It is very different, and that is because it meets the, it is trying to meet the requirements of the ordinance with regard to transparency from the street, it's architecturally, it's much more detailed, all trying to comply with the requirements of the overlay. So I, I just, from a personal perspective, my hat's off to Seven Eleven, because I think this is a very different store from what we normally get from them.
Is that a garden on the side?
Yeah, what is on the side?
This is, this is the DMP, this?
Yes.
That's DMPs. This is some of the street landscaping that's required.
What is it?
It's a water facility. I'll admit, you probably, you may not get all of the trees that are shown here.
Wait a minute.
Because those are on the drawing properties.
Frank, what's behind it?
The warehouse for schools.
No, 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 what's behind that is the Mercedes, that's the auto work.
Yeah, you're right, the auto guy is still there.
Just to add to Barclay, and the beautiful thing about this is, understanding that this is supposed to be Broad Creek Station, they're building this store to fit on a footprint, understanding that there's going to be other parcels, out parcels, with other businesses that are going to be on that site as well. So when you look at along that tree line there, that is the gateway inside the overall, what Frank is pointing to up top, those trees up there, that's the overall way in. And Frank and those guys did a good job making them close that off, you know? So unlike now, if there is no closure, if there's, it's no defining boundaries on that corner at all. But they, they did the architecture to meet the architectural integrity of future buildings that will be on that site as well. And so that is consistent with the future of that actual 17-acre site. And we've acquired properties behind it, we've acquired the Bob Kek Place. This will help us because this pushes back on the front door of the business with the Mercedes place. And so this helps us tremendously, sooner than later, to be able to realize the true potential of that overall site. And from a landscaping standpoint, they've used the same treatments that are across the street. They have uplighting throughout all of the shrubberies, they put the stones over there, the same vegetation that's in there, is the same vegetation that's across the street in the linear park. So the corners are, would complement each other.
Did the planning commission see this?
Yes.
They saw this?
Yes.
Who was the voter of the planning commission?
Well, just so you'll know, at the public hearing before the planning commission, the applicant spoke in support. You had three citizens who spoke in opposition, and we had letters from three civic leagues, as well as from one citizen, opposition, and all in opposition. Now, the issue that the citizens had is they didn't feel that there had been enough outreach. But from the administration's perspective, the staff recommendation to planning commission, which continues to be our recommendation, is approval. Our recommendation is approval because we're looking at it as an issue of consistency with adopted plans, this is absolutely consistent with adopted plans. It does comply with ordinance requirements. The waivers are justified, given the location of the underground tanks, which is our basis for saying we should grant, that we would recommend that you grant, to the waivers associated with the development certificate. The overall site design, as the vice mayor has indicated, is a vast improvement over what is on the site now. It does take advantage of the location, and it's a huge improvement over what is there today, and it does begin to fit in with that overall character envisioned that was outlined in the Broad Creek Plan for this particular quarter. Planning Commission voted to recommend denial by a vote of five to one. The opponent's issue was, the majority on planning commission, their issue was feeling there needed to be more coordination and contact with the neighborhoods. I should acknowledge that the applicant did volunteer to go meet with the neighborhoods. The neighborhoods indicated at this point they weren't interested in having that contact. The one person who voted in support of this request stated that his view was, this is a vast improvement over what is there now, and this is probably the most appropriate use for this site.
So they said they wouldn't talk now?
They were not interested in talking now.
So did they ever say what their problems were with it, other than the fact that allegedly they weren't spoken to?
That was-
No, they were spoken to.
Let's, I, let's accept the fact that I understand that. They alleged that they weren't, did they say what they objected to?
Their issue that they said they objected to was the lack of contact.
But they didn't make anything specific that we could sit down with, then that's another.
Well, let me, let me just say this for the record. I spoke with the civic league, the proffers, that the single servants, all of those proffers that we've asked the Seven Eleven, I sat down with Frank, after going and meeting with Middletown Arch, and a different president at the time, I met with Stonebridge at Norfolk Development Housing Building on Valentine, I met with the rental community over in Broad Creek. And this is something that we've not just started talking about yesterday, this is something I've been talking about for the last seven, eight years, okay? But I went to those communities, found out what their concerns were, okay? I came back to, with Frank, to set a meeting up. Normally, the way that these processes work is that, you know, we had, we didn't have these drawings, and so we were waiting to get the drawings to go to the community after we would see willing, would see whether or not the Seven Eleven Corporation were amenable to proffering the concerns that the community had. They were, we stopped the process until they, we met with them, until we got what we felt like would be something that would add to the overall extensiveness of the community and be a plus. One of the things Mr. Riddick had asked, would this be in the hands of an individual, or would this be owned by the corporation? This would be owned by the corporation. Some of the concerns that the community had were, we have existing stores in our community that have these issues. Well, I said, well, that was the same thing that folks said when we tore down Roberts and Bowlin, that it's going to be the same thing that was there before you tore it down. That hadn't happened to date. So we truly believe that when you start, when you start from scratch and you're building something that's cutting edge, that we have a great opportunity to be able to preserve that and create something that the community would enjoy and would patronize. And so that's why we went through all of the extra steps in terms of adding, that roof there is copper, that's a copper roof, you know, that, that, the same copper roof that's on the villas out in that community. So we wanted the architecture to look just like the community.
Well, Anthony, I remember, I mean, I know the last year and a half I've been here, and I remember a drawing came in, and you looked at it and said, that's unacceptable.
Right.
So I know that that's been going on, and perhaps it's politics as to why we're in this position, because it's something that you've been involved in. Be that as it may, when citizens come in and say, we object, at least tell us what the objection is, and that way we can then consider it. If you haven't been spoken to in the past, is there something that you would raise that we would then step in and take care of? And it doesn't appear to be the case.
And the next step was-
Which tells me it's politics.
The next step was, after that first initial going to the planning commission, normally what happens after that is, I have a meeting with the entire community, I get with the planning commission, get with the city administration, and we pass out notices, just like we did with the public art, just like we did with the villas, just like we did with the Crox Center. So we've been consistent with that approach and being able to allow the community to see what's going on. But we didn't get to that point this time because we had folk that jumped the gun and come down before we got to that process and said they didn't want it. Now, when I was in those meetings, I didn't get that. What I got out of those meetings is that, well, this is important to us. And I brought that back and addressed those issues that were important, the concerns that the community raised there. When they came back, I had no idea that it was, you know, three folk that were in opposition of this, you know? At the end of the day, what we're trying to do is build this community up, and from a economic standpoint, every time we build something of this magnitude in that community, it brings revenue back into that community. That's a 3,000-square-foot facility. There is not one in the city of law.
Can I just ask, Frank, can this Seven Eleven be used as a model for the rest of the city when we start looking at other Seven Elevens? Because, you know, Ocean View is the Seven Eleven capital of the world. I stopped there, I got gas this morning.
Oh, I think Ocean View is.
No, I think Ocean View is. But, you know, I think it's clean, it fits what we should be doing. I mean, I can imagine something like that across from East Beach if the community wanted it, but instead of what's there, you know, and I don't think that the enemy is the convenience store. We've all probably stopped at a Seven Eleven at some point, either for gas or whatever, and I believe they come pretty close to beating Foodline for sales every year. I mean, they bring in revenue, but I think it's clean, I can't see why there's so much opposition to it. And, you know, like I said, could we use this as a model for other Seven Elevens when we reach the point where they might want to tear down, want to rebuild?
If city council appreciates this design and likes it, then yes, whenever we get into an issue where we have the design as a concern, we would definitely be pointing to this as a model.
Well, they helped us over on Hampton Boulevard with the design of the Seven Eleven there, which is so good.
And we're doing that on 21st. We're doing it on 21st.
I just happened to notice this morning that the one on Hampton Boulevard that submitted this, initially when they said the Seven Eleven for that particular site, I was totally against it, a moment up to it. Now, two of our presidents are here with us tonight, they can't speak now, I would suggest that they speak on non-genre items, that's John James and Q. Threl Brockington from Middletown Arch, and also from Stonebridge Manor. And some of the things that have come up here, Mr. James probably would like to respond to, but he can't here, so I would just suggest when, for a non-genre item, that you come up and speak, you know, whatever you want to say, you and Q. Threl as well. I was really surprised when I saw this drawing, and as I said earlier, I was totally against it, but this drawing has made me kind of warm up to it. But I followed the lead of the, of the community, and Mr. Brockington and Mr. James are lifetime friends of mine, and I just hate to be on the other side of the ledger. And so I just hope that this is something that we can answer some questions and do some things to, so everybody will be happy, and the community is really who we want to satisfy.
Has anybody else received a number of emails in support of this? In fact, I felt like I've, I've really had a groundswell of emails from the citizens in support of this, and I thought that one of them said their civic league had voted in favor of it, and it appears that's not the case. Is that, is there some confusion on that?
You have about five, you have about five civic leagues now, you have a homeowners association, which is the Broad Creek-
And how did they vote?
The homeowners association voted in for it. That's why I live directly across the street. You have Middletown Arch, Stonebridge, Central Brambleton, so you've got about four or five entities within that community, and you have the rental community as well. But they also, in this particular model, they wouldn't have red boxes or blockbuster boxes out in front, it would be clean, just like-
Okay, well, we're going to take this up in two weeks then?
Yes.
Is that the way to have a public hearing scheduled for that?
Yes, what we will do now is we'll go straight to the St. Paul's Plan. And the reason we'd like to go straight to that, many of the other initiatives that we have listed are some things that are basically to give you updates, but I believe that this would be more important to make sure that we cover the St. Paul's Plan.
This is a little bit time-sensitive because we are scheduled to have a community meeting on this on February 6th, and we'd like to make sure council is aware of what we're going to be telling the community. I should acknowledge Michelle Cook, who is a member of the St. Paul's Advisory Committee. Ms. Cook has represented Tidewater Gardens, Tenant Management Council on the committee, and we also have representatives from NRHA who served on that committee. This is a plan that has been five years in the making, and we're now seeing the end of the day, so what I'd like to do this evening is give you a quick overview of the plan, see if you have any questions, and then we'll move on to next steps. As a reminder of the boundaries, this is the area that is largely defined by Tidewater Gardens, the downtown plaza site, the area just north of that where we have a series of historic churches in the midst of some commercial and industrial activity, and Tidewater Park Elementary School. This does not include the post office sites, since that is federally owned. It is an area that has been largely isolated from the rest of the city by road networks, the interstate, Tidewater Drive, Brambleton, and St. Paul's, so which is very much an island that has become locked onto itself, is separated from the remainder of the city. But having said that, this is an incredibly attractive location, it's a very strategic location because of its proximity to light rail, as well as its proximity to employment opportunities in downtown, which is one of the issues we heard over and over again from residents of Tidewater Gardens, expressing their desire to be assured that they would be allowed to continue to come back. It's an advantage to us, and there's public ownership between the NRHA and the city of the vast majority of this site. It does have some real assets, the churches that I mentioned before, several of which are on the National Register of Historic Places, we have Huntington Y., Tidewater Park Elementary, and because of those transportation improvements that have been made- that have been made, it's just real assets in this area. But there are challenges. It is very auto-oriented, there's a lot of super blocks and a lot of surface parking lots that don't really attract people into this area. It is physically separated by the road network, and it has become an area that is completely segregated in terms of economics. There is no diversity here, all of the housing in this area is public housing, and the idea should be back to that, there's neighborhoods where people choose to live instead of have to live trying to encourage economic diversity. There are real flooding problems here. Tidewater Gardens is old, so there are issues with the, the physical layout. There's not neighborhood-serving retail in this area, but you've got a large population here that, that is in need of neighborhood-serving retail. We need to improve recreation, we do have high unemployment here, and there is no parking, there's not suitable parking within the Tidewater Gardens development itself. So, we have challenges, we have opportunities, and one of those opportunities is what the market study indicated. The market study said there is demand in this area. There's demand for retail space, for office space, and for housing. And one of the things that we stressed over and over again from the very beginning, Mr. Montgomery has been very good supporting us on this, is that we're going to return every single one of the public housing units in this area back to this area. And so, what we've looked at is a market potential that could be achieved, getting roughly one-third public housing, one-third workforce housing, and one-third market rate housing. Ideally, that will be the mix, and obviously, that may end up being constrained as we continue to develop. We created a, an advisory committee when we first did the draft plan, and this is where Ms. Cook has been very helpful, where we, we asked the residents, tell us what your vision for this area is, and the vision was a new neighborhood with a variety of uses that is connected to the surrounding city, and that offers a variety of facilities and services as well as housing. So, what I want to do now is just show you the physical layout of what that vision could look like. I'm not saying this is the final, that it will look like, but this is what it could look like, and then a few pictures that just give you some ideas of how areas could look. Because without that vision, without these images, we really don't have the passion or the fire that gets people excited about a plan. So, it's looking at Butte Street, looking at Freemason Street, the idea of extending Freemason through this area, and also extending Church Street, trying to restore the historic prominence of Church Street to create a real central point that could be a nucleus of commercial activity here. Continuing, looking south from that same point, the potential intersection of Freemason and Church Street, creating a vista for St. Mary's, which has become totally isolated by interstate ramps. So, it, it has lost some of its, its real importance. This is looking from St. Paul's at St. Mary's, how we can frame those interstate ramps so they didn't look like interstate ramps, but they look like a city street, so that we're telling people when they get off the interstate coming in here, you've arrived in a city, not out in the middle of Chesapeake, but you are in the city.
Same, Frank.
That idea.
You take it.
This could actually wrap. The school administration building is back here, this is taking out their parking, because we're looking at ideas. Looking at how we can address the flooding issue, treating stormwater not just as something we have to get rid of, but as a physical amenity that could be an asset in the community, by doing things like creating retention ponds with parks and walks around them. But also, looking at how we maximize the use of open space to get passive treatment of, of stormwater through open areas where people could play when the weather is nice, but then it could hold some water in order to address some of the flooding problems that definitely exist in the St. Paul's area. And we moved forward with this from those, those images and working from that vision, we have three great things. Creating a neighborhood, and the components of that are the commitment that we as a city have made with NRHA, that we're going to replace public housing in this area on a one-for-one basis. There are 618 units today, there'll be 618 units at the end of the day. We're going to address economic segregation by working to achieve a mixed-income community, ideally, one-third, one-third, one-third. And we're going to invest in resources for safe, healthy, and rewarding living, and this is, this is things like working with our partners and social service agencies to address some of the human needs that are here in this neighborhood. Working with Norfolk Public Schools, it's back to the idea of the city manager, take advantage of centers. We're looking at how we can maximize that concept in order to do this investment in safe, healthy, and rewarding life. We want to create a real strong sense of place, providing additional recreation opportunities. We've been talking to the Huntington Y, we've been talking to Norfolk Public Schools. How do we pull those groups together to better provide recreational opportunities and amenities within this neighborhood? We've got to address stormwater. We need to have design guidelines, we need to work on design to ensure we get an improved design for the overall area, and we got to reconnect missing links. Church Street was disconnected from the downtown area years ago by our road networks. We need to figure out how we reconnect that, and we need to figure out how we can connect the other streets so that we break that barrier that St. Paul's and Brambleton and Tidewater exist by removing barriers to pedestrian mobility. So, the issues that we're dealing with are really, really important in creating a neighborhood is working out, working with tenants to develop tenant relocation plans so tenants, residents of Tidewater Gardens know what's going to happen. Absolutely critical, we're already beginning to work with NRHA on this. I'm going to zip through these because I know you're running a little out of time. Ensure we have parks, ensure that we treat stormwater not just as a physical issue of how do we treat the water, but how do we make it an amenity? How do we respect the churches that exist in this neighborhood? By improving the form of development around them, so that becomes very important. This is a major issue for the churches who also serve on our advisory, our advisory committee. We met with Norfolk Public Schools, and we talked about Tidewater Park Elementary School, where right now, it's turned its back on this community. How do we get that reoriented so it is part of this neighborhood so that you can improve the access where kids aren't wading through water to get to school? How do we make that work? And then we need to make sure we're addressing issues of complete streets, making sure that we are able to accommodate all modes of transit, not just the car, and we ought to look for how we can incorporate public art, taking advantage of some of the things that Vice Mayor has known over at Broad Creek, make us realize this needs to happen in all of our neighborhoods.
Frank, just briefly, the part in front of St. Mary's. There's that ramp that backs up, and as we all know, City Hall, excuse me, St. Paul as it goes down, it just, is there any way that we cannot use or get rid of that ramp and shift it somewhere else?
We don't have a way to get rid of it, because that was, that was one of the issues with getting them all there, so the issue becomes how do we tame it? And that's where we've come up with the idea that we need to look at taking advantage of the spaces adjacent to that ramp by getting buildings with some height, and then improve pedestrian access so that people can move back into that area. Earl Fraley was a representative of St. Mary's on the, the group, and he told me over and over again the story of people come into out of town and they see St. Mary's and they want to go, go worship there on a Sunday morning, and you can't figure out how to get there. So, we've got to improve the accessibility to St. Mary's because it is a beautiful church, and I feel fortunate that they let us have some of our meetings in the church. It's an incredible facility.
It's a beautiful place, it needs to be.
And it's just really hidden by the interstate ramp. We've got to remedy that to the, to the extent we can, and it's one of the things that this looks.
How about the MLK Monument?
The MLK Monument is just outside the area. What we are looking at is how we can better tame those streets to create pedestrian movements. So, what you're looking at is the MLK Monument is here, this is one of the places where we need to stress pedestrian opportunities, as well as the idea of extend the concept of Church Street as a boulevard down into the community so that we get back some of that historic prominence of Church Street. Because this used to be a main connector into downtown, and we cut it off. We can fix it, we need to try to fix it by working on this. And Marcus indicated to you that we were going to hint about the bus transfer. One of the things we're looking at is a way to help reconnect this area to the city and address needs of the residents of this area for access to transit, is we, this is a good location for a bus transfer facility.
What's that?
A bus transfer facility?
Yeah, it was by Chrysler.
Where this is, this is at.
There's the Rotunda.
Yeah. There's the Rotunda. This is the Norfolk Academy Building. The fire station is right here, so it's immediately south of the fire station. The advantage of that is, these things are not great neighbors to everyone, so this would be a nice neighbor to have for it because you've got a lot of attention to it, you've got people there, people can see what's going on.
Is that Shell?
No, this is, yeah, this is Charlotte up here.
Oh, your people 24 hours.
You've got people 24 hours a day. We need to have some kind of a pavilion here to provide some of the human amenities to treat people with respect. That's one of the issues that's missing at Cedar Grove, so we need to look at how we can do this. And then we also need to recognize that if we're going to try to get some mixed use in this area as well, we need to be able to deal with parking, so you could do a parking deck to the south of it to help provide the buffer, but you create visibility for this, this site, which is what is missing, and it improves bus service to a community that is in desperate need of it, and begins to break down the barrier because one of the things that Mr. Kiefer has acknowledged, not sitting over there just smiling at me there, that we're going to have to improve pedestrian connections across St. Paul's to make this work. So, we're continuing to explore this area, this site, and we'll be back with more details about it as we, as more developed. These are just some of the early layouts and plots as to how this could be done, respecting the need for space in the fire department and providing the amenities that are needed, as well as the accessibility and the visibility that you need to really have a good bus transfer facility, which, if you look at all the cities that have workable bus transfer facilities, they are all within walking distance of downtown, which Cedar Grove is not, just begins to address that issue as well. And then I've got the issue that I mentioned, removing the pedestrian barriers. You see the improvements that you were asking about at the Martin Luther King Monument, you also see the improvements in the vicinity of the potential bus transfer facility if this continues to work out well across St. Paul's in order to create a better environment and encourage people to get through this area. Where we got to go from here is we've got to continue to work on the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, which is where we're now working with NRHA, looking at how we go to the next step of refining these drawings, getting more detail about the stormwater needs, beginning to develop that urban development, urban design guidelines, looking at what the human needs are for the, for a human capital plan. Got a survey that will be going out to residents of Tidewater Gardens, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods, looking at what the human capital needs are within the next couple of weeks. Out of that, we'll have to develop a phasing plan for how this could be developed, looking at all the infrastructure needs, developing a feasible financial strategy and developing that phasing plan. What we've done right now with this plan as it's moving forward is we have broken it out into timeframes and cost categories. You've seen this on every plan I've done since I've been here, these are consistent with every plan, you're going to see them again in the general plan, so it's going to begin looking at what it's going to cost to implement it and what the timeframe is. I'll tell you right now, this is probably a 30-year vision. And then we take every single one of our outcomes, we look at what we're trying to achieve, define how we'll get there, who's got the lead on it, when it ought to be completed, and an estimated cost, and then he notes to deal with timing and how this relates to others. We've been doing this to a lot of groups over the past few months. We've got NRHA, their board on October, in October, we went to the Planning Commission in October, Planning Commission voted to support this. We carried it to Health, Education, and Families, you saw a slightly different version in October. In November, we went to the School Board, the School Board got excited about this and looked at the possibility of moving the work on Tidewater Park Elementary up in conjunction with this effort. We went to the Tidewater Gardens TMC, they were very nice, they let us crash their Christmas dinner, and it was really nice. They gave us that opportunity, we come here tonight, February 6th, which is why this is a little time sensitive, we are going to hold a community meeting to present this to the broader community so that more people have an opportunity to look at it and, and have input on it, and that would then allow us to start the plan adoption meeting process in, in February and May. We have already met with the Virginia Department of Transportation to look at the traffic impacts of this as required, and they actually think they're going to be able to give us a clean bill if they don't think this is going to have a significant impact on the traffic network because of all of the other components that we've tried to weave into this.
My, my question would be, you know, you, you're talking about adopting this plan. But with, with the adoption of this plan, it speaks very little to the people.
The plan actually does speak to the people, it's the human capital element, this is something we haven't done in a lot of our plans?
No, no, I'm talking about in terms of defining who lives there, the types of housing, you know, you know, senior citizens. You know, you showed the pretty pictures and everything, but again, in terms of trying to merge, you know, a, a community, you don't want to go back and try to isolate people. I mean, you've got a nice tract of land, you don't want to be, go back and try to isolate people on that, that same tract of land. So, then I ask you, then in terms of defining, you know, who lives there, how many senior citizens, who's coming, because everybody's not coming back.
Right.
You know, so then you got to do, the, the smooth move in terms of moving people, where to go, how long will it take them to come back? You know, I, I, I like, when I say human capital, again, it's not about bricks and mortar, it's about people.
It is about people.
Right, and so, for me, it's about understanding, you know, when you're going to trigger the piece as it relates to people. I understand the challenges that we have in terms of the infrastructure and everything else, but at the end of the day, when we started talking about who's the people here in terms of the types of housing that you're going to build, because one of the challenges that we had, they had gotten, to put the cart before the horse in Broad Creek, when they started building the senior facilities, were not taking into account that the types of families that were there, meaning that you had grandparents taking care of their grandkids, and they couldn't live in the senior high rises. So, if you, you know, you're going to go through that same process here in terms of understanding who lives there, you know, and providing the types of housing stock, you know, for those families that, that live there. And I understand that we can't do some of the things that we did in Hope 6 in terms of the guidelines, I, I think that we, we were, we pushed the envelope there, but I understand that that won't happen again, if I'm correct, in terms of we require people to have to be working, game, employed, yes. Right, so, again, trying to make this place a place that, a choice neighborhood, that others will embrace and want to live there, you know.
One of the issues that we did is, is very early, and this was a survey that looked at the residents of Tidewater Gardens, and you're right, roughly half of them want to come back regardless, and another quarter is saying, we may want to come back, we want to see, and a quarter or so, we'd like to look at all of our other options. We may not want to come back here. We are looking, the plan does acknowledge that we need to provide a diversity of housing types, but one of the things that we're looking at now is, is looking at the overall layout of the site, can, how much housing could we provide that would be in the form of town owns? How much could be done in the form of mid-rises? How much would have to be done with the high rises? Recognizing you can't put a family in a high rise. So, we're working out those additional steps, that's part of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, which begins to refine this vision.
But shouldn't that be in there before adoption?
No, sir. I've got to be able to, I've got to be able to get the overall vision in place, and now we begin to look at how we refine that in order to deal with these details.
So, what would I be adopting?
What you're developing is a vision, an overall vision that is saying, yes, these are the things we want to move forward with, we are wanting to make these commitments.
But in that overall vision, I would like to, again, to speak to the people in terms of, when we say a third, a third, a third, we mean a third, a third, a third, meaning that we're talking about the people that live on that site, and we're going to try to ensure that they come back, we're going to make sure.
That's under.
The second part of that equation is that we, we're not going to impact high census poverty tracks in other communities, make sure that we're, we're truly dispersing poverty, we're not just concentrating it, whether it be the South Side or other places that are very vulnerable, Coleman Places and places like that, that we're going to make sure that in our efforts to do this, that we're going to try to take care of people. So, I would like to see something, in case none of us are here, and you said this is a 30-year proposition, that at the end of the day, that you got a, a plan, a blueprint that speaks to what this council wants to see in the dispersing of, the disperse, the dispersment of poverty in this city, especially in an area like that, and you can do it because you've got more land in that particular area than your downtown, and you're, you're able to attract more commercial and retail development to sustain that as well. So, I, I would like to see something that speaks to the people, to protect the interests of the people long-term.
Paul, you have something? Paul, did you want to, because I got a couple.
Okay, yeah. I guess for 10 years, I've been, you know, we've been talking about this, this plan, this is probably the most ambitious one, and the only thing that I've been saying, that I continue to say two things, first of all, some, something should have already been done as far as housing for the individuals who live there. You'd be surprised, you know, at the anxiety that, you heard me say this before, that a lot of these seniors go to bed with not knowing when the bulldozer is coming. Another thing, 10 years ago, and I say the same thing, something should have been done to take race out of it. I remember, again, as so many other people do, you can get. I remember, again, as so many other people do, you can, you know, the African-American community was told they could come back. Sure, they had $400,000. But now we're talking about adopting a plan and you're talking about, you know, moving on a quick, on a property of fast pace, but nothing has been done for the people who already live in there. You know, what's going to happen during the period of time while you're waiting to develop this marvelous community? Where are they going to go? Are they going to be saturated? You know, I got a, Steve Morales gave us a breakdown of where the Section 8 housing is in Norfolk now. In between Hunterville and Lindenwood, it's 197 Section 8 units there. So, you know, this could have been all made a lot easier to transition. Would have been a lot smoother had housing been prepared, number one, first for the seniors. Number two, a lot of you probably remember an article about four or five years ago, there are more children that live in Tidewater Park than adults. So, you know, I mean, it all sounds good, but the skeptical part of me who has seen the history of some of the things that Norfolk has done, I'm just, you know, I'm looking at it with a jaundice eye.
Can I say a couple of things?
Yeah.
Just a couple of things. Andy, you mentioned this off-ramp. My theory is the off-ramp was put there for a purpose, and that was to segregate this community from the rest of downtown. Okay? I mean, they put physical barriers there. If you go back and look at the downtown plaza, it turned its back on Tidewater Park. You know, that was the back door and everything else fronted St. Paul's. The whole idea was to hide Tidewater Park, in my opinion, behind the downtown plaza and to keep it roped in where people could not literally walk across the street by the ramps. So, you know, I mean, this notion of how could we cut through these ramps? I think we're almost stuck with what's happened now, but I, I know Frank has investigated that and the planners have. The thing that I think is missing here, right, is something that both Anthony and Paul really hit on, is you've talked about the phasing piece, where the folks who are concerned about that we're going to come through there and take down these homes, who knows where they're going to live until the new ones come back? You know, and some of them don't come back, you know, until the new ones, that they're... I've thought the plan should include a phasing process where you sort of came across Finn Church first or somewhere in there and, you know, and built some housing. Then you move the residents from Tidewater Park, some of those into that housing, and then you came in and took down those units that, for the people who had just moved out of them. You follow me? If you move some of that housing across Finn Church there and created homes for folks, and then you went and took down the homes that they had just vacated, and then you built that section, I think there needs to be some attention before you get out in the community of the phasing process, which was, I think, you know, maybe more than any other plan we've had, I think is important here. Because like Paul said, we've been talking about this for a long time. And people are, you know, when you come back in there again, it's either going to sound like an empty promise to them, or it's going to scare them that this time they're really going to come in here and move me or take down my home. And there are generations who have been living in there and who are concerned about where they're going to be next month if they think we're going to come in here without a plan that will phase this. And, I mean, I agree with the vision piece, but if you're living in one of those units in there and you see that the place where you're living is now some grand park, where are you going to be while the rest of this gets built? It's, it can be terrifying. So, you know, there has to be some attention to the phasing piece and what sort of housing is going to go on the other side of Finn Church. Because I thought that community ought to be brought forward, actually, and as opposed to just sort of, you know, you know, this, and I know the mix is going to be very important, but I think the housing, the issues of the housing first stuff, bringing that forward across Finn Church while you've got that property there that's sort of vacant, build some housing in there, the type of which is really, improves the lives of these folks, then go back and tear down the units that you've just, you know, vacated and phase it in that fashion where you're not moving people, you know, you're not sending them to some other neighborhood. You're keeping them right there. And if we do this smart enough, we can do that. By the way, you ought to try to identify where the money's coming from, how you're going to do this while you're making these plans. So, you know what I mean? Finn Church, Church Street just, it just falls away. And there was a logic for that as well, as everybody knows, and Paul knows the history better than anybody. They wanted it there, several generations ago. But this way you connect, I would like to see Church Street roll right on through and, you know, and then maybe connect up with Freemason and brought back out to St. Paul's. If you look at the street patterns back in there, I mean, when they put downtown plaza in there, they just, they destroyed the street pattern. They destroyed the grid. But anyway, but when you get out there for this meeting, make sure you talk about a long-range aspect of this and the phasing that's going to occur, then people will not have to lose their homes without a place to go close to where, you know, right where they weren't supposed to be.
Look, no...
Marcus, you're smart. I mean, you know what I'm talking about.
Mark, you've got an abbreviated version because of time, because we do have a lot of these issues fleshed out most.
Do people know, I mean, because I know there, like Paul said, there's anxiety about when people are supposed to, when the bulldozer's coming. So do people have an idea of whether this is 2013, 2015, when...
We are telling people over and over again that this is not going to happen quickly.
What does that say?
But that's, that's, that means different things to different people. Even around this table, that means different things.
This is not going to, we're not going to be coming in and bulldozing all of Tidewater Gardens next year because we've got to be able to work with RHA. We've got to be able to house the residents of Tidewater Gardens. We've got to be, and one of the issues that is, we called for from the very beginning is the idea that we've got to get some of that replacement housing in the first phase of what happens with the overall development to do exactly what you're saying.
But can we nail down a year? You know, people shouldn't have to, next year you come in, you say, well, next year, February, we're going to be moving people out. I mean, you guys should have a plan in place where you speak to 2014.
You've got to nail down some money first.
Right, but I'm just saying, but you've got people, you've got people, I understand that. I understand that. But you've got people in the community that think that within the year, next year, that are, you know, that have anxiety about, you know, how soon they're going to be available.
Give them a year's notice or two years or whatever is reasonable.
Best-case scenario, Frank, based on some of the conversations that we've had, we're dealing with the planning grant now. Best-case scenario, if everything works out and we keep the current administration of Washington who's friendly to grants...
And friendly to housing.
And friendly to housing through the next election. Best-case scenario, what are we looking at in terms of a timetable? If everything worked like clockwork and it all panned out perfectly, what would be the earliest available date approximately that we would look at moving people or starting to give notices to people and that type of thing?
I think you're at least three to five years away from being able to physically move people.
Well, that's, that's all I wanted.
Now I think we can tell people that, because we've got to develop this vision, get this vision, make sure that that's what the community wants and that's what council is going with. That then allows us to continue to move forward with refining the plan to go through and look at all of the utility connects in Tidewater Gardens, which are unbelievable.
This will be both public and private money.
It's going to require public and private money to do it. There's not enough public money to do this and it's going to require partnership.
Who's driving the train?
With regard to...
This project?
I believe the city council wants to.
We've done this once. You know, I would hope that you would use this, I mean, we've done it once. I would hope that you would take some of the successes that RHA has had in doing Broad Creek as a HOPE 6. It was the best HOPE 6 in the country and was awarded for that. So, I mean, it's not something new, but the reality of it is you've got to deal with the people part of this first. You know, and like Paul said, you know, there are people that are still afraid of what happened yesterday in terms of building this pretty picture and not being able to come back. So I would hope that you guys would get with folk, because you have people that are in public housing now that could afford HOPE, that don't have bad credit, that work for the city, that could move into a homeownership opportunity. So when you begin to start to looking at the types of housing, I would hope that you would first do that people side of it and understand the seniors, who could possibly move to homeownership right now, and those folks who need young people that are in there who could benefit from the credit, credit training and the GED program and the educational components that we utilize in the other program to get people ready to come back. If you've got three years before you move anybody and you've got another two, three years before you build it, you're talking about six years. So you've got more than enough time to prepare people to be able to come back, be gainfully employed, and to make sure that they have an opportunity to move in this community.
Now, where is the meeting going to be?
At Ruffner Middle School.
That's where the last meeting is.
No, our last meeting we had was at Hunt and Y. And before that, the meeting was at the Murray Center. And we've kind of moved these around.
Well, the meeting that is where you're going to share the vision, I know you've been collecting...
That will be, well, we had, the last big community meeting we had on this was, I think, at the Murray Center.
Okay. The ones that the council actually had seen before...
Yeah.
And the ones that had presented to the public as a plan, was it the Ruffner? Was it Ruffner? I mean, I attended a couple of meetings before you ever worked here, Frank.
Right.
And there's a, there is, you know, we don't want a sense of deja vu of walking in here saying, this is the same plan we showed you four or five years ago. And, you know, I mean, there has to be a credibility issue here as well with this. There has to be a sense of trust to develop with this community that we just don't keep coming back with another plan every four or five years. I've sat through a couple of meetings over there at Ruffner about this. How long ago was it, guys? I mean, I, you know, it's...
About four years ago.
It's, so, I mean, there has to be some explanation to the public about why we're back here. Okay?
And that's in the longer version that does acknowledge.
Okay, all right, then, okay.
All right. A little quickly, Nick Ford.
Here we go.
Marcus, these items that we didn't get to, the presentations, in the past, they just seem to disappear and then we never hear on them. And there's a couple of things on here I'd like to hear, like the Healthy Communities Initiative and the update on Neighbors, Bully Neighbors. Will we see those again?
Yeah, we'll put them all in the pack at three this week. And then, at a bare minimum, in the MOT, we'll cover it at a high level. And then, if time permits, we can come back with some version.
We can just come back early. We can come, we can start our day earlier.
Sure.
Well, these presentations too would be good for like the informal session when we have a meeting after that, we have time, we're all here.
They're really planning-oriented.
So when we only are here from two to three for a meeting with a...
Just take a special award and we can stay longer.
I would like to have the Clean Water Act that we were supposed to have in November we didn't get to, and that wasn't ever brought up for discussion. I'm so happy to have ten.